Thank you very much for giving us an opportunity to speak. My name is Al Weiss. Been in the city about 40 years. I own property in this neighborhood, 119 Ashley Street, for about 25 years. That was somebody else's failed project. I came here for a job when I graduated from Province College in 1972. We bought a home in East Forest Park. I raised three kids. You'll take one of my business cards, you'll find my Connecticut address. We don't want people from the hood upsetting people in East Forest Park. Occasionally, there's a little bit of action in that neighborhood. All I can tell you right now is we're vehemently, I'm vehemently opposed to this project. We've been through a 10-year depression, recession. Before that, we were through the tornado, construction on Ashley Street. We've been through a situation with the storm drain system where it backs up constantly. They corrected it or tried to correct it a couple of years ago. There's a major public safety issue with this particular project. They're going to eliminate the lights. You've got a grammar school that's finally been brought into the neighborhood that the kids are proud to go to. There's a crossing guard out there who's got a system across the street with the light. And without lights there, it's my belief someone will eventually die. All you have to do is look at the East Long Metal Rotary, which is a zoo. And I'm going to ask you to turn around and jot on the corner of your bladder, who's got the right of way in the rotary? Who, in your mind, has a right of way in a rotary? Okay? I know. We'll compare notes after. But the bottom line is, without a street light there, the kids are going to be running across the street and the traffic is going to be zipping in and out of that rotary. And it's my true belief that someone's going to die. Also, they're going to put a granite curb, okay, in the center of this thing. And they're going to have an island that's going to obscure the vision through the rotary. What's going to happen is if anyone has an accident in the rotary, it's going to shut down traffic totally. Right now, we've got lights. So it's a very organized thing. There have been no major accidents in that intersection that I've seen in 25 years. What we've had is a major problem in the area with drugs, people cruising through the area looking for drugs. A lot of that is gone. It's gone at great personal expense to me, my wife, and the Springfield Police Department, who never had a third shift on narcotics. But Tommy Tritz, when he was a sergeant, came down there and sat in that parking lot. And we successfully cleaned up that neighborhood by the time he retired as a captain. And that neighborhood has become a neighborhood again. And we don't want to destroy that neighborhood. So, public safety is the issue. There's going to be major business interruption for all the local businesses there. I had five empty apartments the last time they worked on the street. People tracked the dirt into the apartments. And the bottom line is, it affected my income. Now, I paid a million dollars in property tax in the city of Springfield. Our properties that I bought, they've normally been problem properties. And I've been successful at turning these things around. I own one on the corner of Berkshire and Harvey. That was someone else's failed project.
Okay, sir, that's, um, that's three minutes.
Excuse me?
That's over three minutes. Is there anything?
Do you have, I'm out of hearing.
Anything else you would like to say to conclude? Your time is up. Just wanted to make sure you got your final point across.
Okay. Can I make any other points, or are we done?
Okay. I'll give you an additional 15 seconds.
In closing, there's also a federal mandate to separate the sewer and the storm drain systems. It hasn't been done in that neighborhood. Now, on your brochure, you're calling yourself the fourth-best green, cheap, uh, cheap state, but also, green city in the United States. Okay? Putting raw sewage from Bonny's Island every time it rains is not green. And the Connecticut Water River, uh, the Connecticut, the Connecticut Environmental River, River, uh, River Shop community basically objects to what happens every time it rains in the city of Springfield. Because there's sewage that flows raw down the streets. As a matter of fact, my parking lot used to fill up with raw sewage every time it rained. And we, we have kids.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Who are laying the water. And in fact, I think that this is going to have a negative impact on the drainage system in that area.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker we have on the list is Al Mascari, Mascaro?
Ron Mascaro.
Ron Mascaro. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Ronald Mascaro. I've been in the neighborhood for approximately 38 years. My family's had property in that area since 1920. Um, the business that I run out of is one of the parcels of land that they're only looking to take a small part of, but it's going to have a major impact on my business. Presently, I have a meeting with, um, DPW on Wednesday. This actually is all out of term. I was hoping to get a few other things resolved before coming to this meeting. There's going to be changes that are going to affect my business as far as the curb cuts, um, non-stopping. Like Mr. Weiss said, there are presently lights there. At the time, people stop. Without lights, there's not going to be a reason for them to stop. They're going to continue to flow right through.
That's okay.
The amount of kids that travel through there is numerous. Every day, I see them. There's trailer trucks that travel down to Cakely at the bottom of the hill. 53-foot trailers along with 10-foot, or 10-wheel tractors. I've sat down with, uh, Mr. Luca in the past, looking to see as far as the radius. Nothing is in concrete. I'd like to see more of the particulars on the rotary itself. If there, if there is a raised curb put there, and one of the trailer trucks ends up with a flat tire from clipping the curb, you can kiss the day of traffic goodbye. The way it is right now, there's nowhere for anybody to even pull over when there's an accident. They tie up the intersection. If it's on Walland Street, they take the shortcut going down Hancock. But if they tie that entire intersection up, like I say, with a 53-foot trailer, there's no, you can't take one street and not the other. It's going to affect the entire rotary. Like I said, my biggest concern is the safety along with who's going to stop. There's no reason to stop if it's not a red light. I sit there every day and I watch the traffic. I watch everybody come to a red light, and at least you hear the brake squeal. Come to a stop. With no road, or with no lights there, it's going to be a continual flow. That's basically my biggest concern along with coming out of my business. If they put curbs in there, which I don't know until I speak to our meeting on Wednesday to see how the curbs are going to be set up. That's my biggest concern. I thank you very much.
Thank you. The last person signed up to speak is, I don't have a name, it just says Al's Barber Shop. Does someone hear from Al's Barber Shop?
Mr. President.
Okay. All right. All right, the time is now 7 o'clock. We'll get started with our regular meeting.
Uh, Mr. President, there is a question.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I've been at the office door, and I've been out in that area, and, um, there are businesses out there that have been around for a long time, particularly, uh, Mascaro's. So, um, I'm concerned that there's confusion and that the business owners don't, aren't aware of what the price is going to be. I, if you don't speak up, there's not going to be that much discussion. There's, I have to make this message here. So I'm going to set up a meeting to see if we can clear off some of these, answer some of these questions.
Okay. So... Did you, uh, did you want to take that up in your committee? The Maintenance and Development Committee? Okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you. All right, we'll get started with our regular meeting. Roll call, Mr. Clerk. Counselor Edwards. Present. Counselor Allen.
Present.
Present. Counselor Rook. Absent. Counselor Gomez.
Present.
Present. Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Present. Counselor Marcus Williams.
Present.
Present. Counselor Ash.
Here.
Here. Counselor Twiggs.
Present.
Present. Counselor Shea.
Present.
Present. Counselor Fenton.
Present.
Present. Counselor Hurst. Absent. Counselor Bud Williams. Absent. Counselor Ramos.
Present.
Present. Would the council and our guests please stand for a moment of silence? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please recognize the councilor's seats number 11 and 12? Counselor Hurst.
Present.
Present. Counselor Bud Williams. Are there any reports of committee? Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met prior to this meeting at 6 o'clock. Counselor Twiggs, Counselor Fenton, and I were, uh, we were the members of the Finance Committee. We were all in attendance. And, uh, President Ramos came as well, joined the meeting at the end. We went through the various financial items on tonight's agenda, got good explanations on all of them, and, uh, were in favor. We didn't take a formal vote, but we were in favor of all the items. Uh, there were no issues that we had. We did go through the, um, collective bargaining issues from a contract standpoint and residency standpoint and things. So, I think it's fair to have people ask questions about them. But, uh, the Finance Committee felt good about all the items tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other reports of committee? Counselor Marcus Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just providing an update on where we stand with the mobile food truck ordinance. Uh, last week, Jay Littori and I, who was the president of the Young Professional Subcommittee, met with the Aqua Civic Association to discuss the mobile food truck ordinance and some of the contents within, uh, within that. And, you know, it was received properly, and we have scheduled a meeting out from April 5th to kind of follow up with some of the suggestions they raised to us, as well as to just let this body know that we will be meeting with the vendors, those vendors who have current operation in terms of having a mobile food truck in the city of Springfield within the next two weeks prior to the ordinance coming before this body. So, uh, we've been doing our due diligence, and we, we look forward to, to that day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other reports of committee? Seeing none. Item number one, Mr. Clerk.
Item number one is the January Revenues versus Expenditures Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, tonight, we have the January Revenue and Expenditure Report. I'm happy to report that, uh, our revenues and our expenditures are both on budget through seven months of the fiscal year.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none. All right. Thank you. Item number two, Mr. Clerk.
Items number two through nine are petitions for mobility. Uh, they are in the, they are all currently in the Maintenance and Development Subcommittee.
They're still in committee.
These items will remain in committee? Do we need a vote, Mr. Clerk?
No.
Okay. Item number 10?
Item number 10 is a petition for a, it's a petition to relocate lines, poles, and wires on Roosevelt Avenue.
Good evening.
Counselors, good evening. Uh, and just as kind of a housekeeping thing, uh, Mr. Clerk, items 10 and 12 are the exact same thing. Item 10 is a petition by Eversource to relocate a conduit at the intersection of Island Pond Road and Roosevelt Avenue to accommodate the project that's there. Pole needs to be moved, so the underground conduit needs to be moved. That's item 11, or excuse me, item 10 and 12. Do you want to do these individually, Mr. President, or would you like to have, go through all of them?
Why don't you go through all of them?
Sure. Uh, item number 11, Columbia Gas, is going to be replacing the existing gas main in Allen Street from its intersection with Rifle Street up through Island Pond Road. Item number 13, Eversource is going to be placing two new electric poles on Warwick Street near its intersection with Haywood, replacing, uh, two existing poles. And item number 14, in the area of Cambridge Street and Burr Street, uh, near Oak Grove Ave, Columbia Gas is going to be installing new six-inch gas lines to replace existing, um, deteriorating cast iron pipe.
Are there any questions from the council on any of these items? Seeing none. All those in favor of, uh, item number 10, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do ayes have it? Item number 11, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 11 is a petition, is a report from the Board of Works, Public Works approving of the installation of underground gas mains in East Forest Park.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do ayes have it? Item number 12, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 12 is a report from the Board of Public Works approving a petition from Eversource for the installation, for the relocation of existing poles.
Now, as, um, Mrs. Signoli said, item number 12 is identical to number 10. Do we need another vote for that?
Correct.
We do need another vote?
Correct.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do ayes have it? Item number 13.
Item number 13 is a favorable report from the Board of Public Works regarding a petition from Verizon for the installation of poles on Warwick Street.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do ayes have it? Number 14?
Item number 14 is a favorable report from petition from Columbia Gas for the installation of an underground gas main on, in the Bay neighborhood.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do ayes have it? On grants, why don't we take them all together, 15, 16, and 17?
Item number 15 is the FY17 Fire Safe Grant in the amount of $14,039. Item number 16 is the Springfield Cultural Council Library Grant in the amount of $3,000. Item number 17 is the Firefighters Charitable Foundation Donation in the amount of $300.
All those in favor of accepting these grants, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do ayes have it? Item number 18, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 18 is an order authorizing the preliminary schematic design of the new East Forest Park Library. Item number 18 is an order authorizing the preliminary schematic design for the new East Forest Park Library.
I just got back from a wedding in Orlando, so I'm a little, still in Orlando. It's okay. Okay. Good evening, Molly Fogarty, Library Director.
Good evening.
Have any questions?
Is there anything you'd like to tell us?
Well, um, just to update you on the, um, East Forest Park Branch Library, a grant was submitted on January 26th. The process from now, there are independent review committee that are mostly out-of-state people, librarians and architects that will be looking at the proposal, and they'll be reviewing them in the next few months. We should hear in July 13th, I think, of 2017, about the funding for the project. There are 33 libraries across the Commonwealth that apply for funding.
I think so, too.
There's about $120 million bond authorization from, um, the state, but the funding only gets appropriated, there's so much funding every year, so it's about a five-year bond. So, the Mass Board of Library Commissioners thinks they'll be funding about six libraries the first round. So, it's very competitive, and we're hoping, we feel we did a good job, and we're hoping we'll get, be in the first round. But part of the regulations, the Mass, um, Public Library Construction Regulations, require an order to the City Council to be approved, not only to apply for the grant, but also to expend the funding and also to approve the preliminary schematic design. So you should have a copy of the site plan that shows sort of the, where the library will be sited on the property of Mary Dryden School and the parking, adjacent parking. And then a, um, a schematic design of the library itself, which shows, um, all the different functions that we have put into the grant request. So we have a community room. As you walk in, you see a lobby, there's a cafe area, a community room. You go straight into the adult area. The bright yellow, um, part of the schematic design is the children's room with a separate program room. The dark orange is the teen area. And then there's a small teen media digital literacy area, which is lighter orange, and the dark green is the adult area. We have also some individual study rooms, and the blue you see is a community room that will accommodate up to 100 people. So that's the basic design of the building, of the schematic design. If you have any questions?
Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have two questions, Molly.
Sure.
On the site plan, it shows off of, I think this is Surrey.
Yes.
The entrance to the parking lot here.
Right.
And a cul-de-sac, what appears to be a cul-de-sac at the end?
Yeah, the idea was so that people parking would have a turnaround at the end.
182.
So that they could then come through, so we wouldn't be having people parking, you know, backing out of a parking space and then backing in, having other cars.
Okay. So my question is, this, this light, what appears to be a path of some sort that sort of parallels the parking structure and then wraps around what's noted as a retaining wall of some sort? It appears that that path has an exit to the northwest of the cul-de-sac. Is that correct?
Yes.
Where is that path going?
That goes to Loretta Street. So if you're coming from Loretta Street, you could walk to the library or bike to the library.
Very good.
So we wanted to provide access to, to, Loretta Street is a dead-end street, but people could walk and, um, so that they wouldn't have to walk all the way around out to Island Pond and then down to Surrey. So, but there's no automobile access to Loretta, just walking and biking.
That's great. Okay, thank you. I just, we'll have to be cognizant of the parking regulations on Loretta if and when we get this grant.
Yes.
Comes to fruition, so we don't have a bunch of cars piling up all the way back to Island Pond.
No, we knew that people wouldn't want that to happen, so the cul-de-sac is for turnaround.
And then my other question is just sort of for context. What are the lease payments, what are the terms of the lease that we currently have on the Island Pond location of the library?
Okay. Well, we pay about $36,000 a year for occupancy of the building, and, um...
That's it?
Yes.
$36,000 for the full year?
Yes.
Okay. And how long is the term?
Uh, it's about, it's renewable every year, so it's, it should, it will be going up to, I think, $42,000 in fiscal '19.
Okay.
For fiscal '18, we're all set.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Counselor Allen.
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. Um, yeah, Molly, on the, um, on the timeline, so the January grant, the grant was submitted in January.
Yes.
And is there, the reason this is on the agenda tonight, is this related to the approval of that?
Yes. In order for the grant to be approved, uh, we need to get approval from the City Council for the preliminary schematic design and not only to apply for the grant, which you gave us permission to do in January, at the January 9th meeting, but also to expend the funding if we get funded. It's, it's a state regulation.
So everyone else who we're competing with would have approved this as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Are we like last in line, or did we get a delay that we...
No, we have until June 17th to get this in, but, um, we, so we're trying to get it in early.
So it says preliminary schematic, and I've seen it before, et cetera, but, um, what would make it not preliminary? What, you know, what if, what if the grant got approved and did not give all the funding that would allow for this building to be built the way it is? Would there be a follow-up schematic design?
Absolutely, yes. Yes.
And some, something in the library might have to not be the way it's presented here.
Right. I mean, at the, at this point, this is the design that was submitted with the grants. At this point, this is the design that was submitted with the grant, so that's what we're asking approval for.
So this matches with the grant?
Exactly, yes.
The schematic, if we approve it, goes in with that?
Exactly.
There's no money involved?
There, we're not, right.
Just keeping everything in sync?
Exactly, exactly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Marcus Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Molly, just a quick question. Any idea who some of the competition might be? Is it, is it local? Is it regional?
It's statewide.
It's statewide?
Statewide. There are libraries in all the different regions that have applied for grants.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19 for passage in one vote, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do ayes have it? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On approving the order, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rook. Absent. Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Twiggs.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved.
Thank you.
Item number 19, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 19 is an order to approve a five-year lease of DPW solid waste vehicles.
Good evening, councilors. Uh, the DPW is looking to purchase five fully automated trash trucks and one box truck. Those trucks total purchase of approximately $1.6 million, and we are looking to do that over a five-year purchase versus a three-year, so therefore, we need the council approval. Uh, last year, we put out a bid for regular vehicles in the city, various vehicles. We've been receiving rates less than 1% for a five-year term, so it's very favorable to the city.
Any questions? Counselor Allen.
Uh, so Chris, the reason you're here is because it's five years?
Because it's five years, correct.
If it was three years, you would just be able to do it without us.
Correct.
So the question is the five-year?
Correct.
And it's that much of an advantage for you?
Oh, absolutely.
This way?
Absolutely, yes.
Have you done five years with any previous?
Yeah, the past two purchases that we've done for, I say, non-enterprise fund vehicles in the city, and that includes dump trucks, pickup trucks for all of the departments, because the DPW oversees vehicles for all the departments, uh, the last two years, last two times we've done a purchase have all been five-year purchases.
And that's...
And the rates have been very, very good for that.
So the difference in five years to three years is the rate is that much better?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none. All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On approving the lease, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook. Absent, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved. Item number 20, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 20 is an order to approve the collective, to ratify the collective bargaining agreement with the city and the UFCW.
Good evening, counselors. There are about 108 employees in the DPW parks and police department that are covered under this collective bargaining agreement. That includes drivers, mechanics, laborers, and other classifications. The current contract expired on June 30th, 2016. We had approximately 12 bargaining sessions, and we've agreed to two contracts. One is for one year, and that's July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017, followed by a three-year contract from July 1, 2017 to June 30th, 2020. The wage increases are 2%, 2%, 2%, and 2%. We've made a couple of changes to the contract, we've added GPS to the contract so that we can enhance safety, efficiency, and quality of our, delivery of our services, we can put GPS in our vehicles. We increased the tool allowance for the mechanics from $200 to $250 effective next fiscal year. We've put in a 16-hour work limitation that can only be exceeded if both the employee and the employer agree on that. We've put in some dress code and uniform language, and those are the significant highlights of the change to this contract. It has been ratified by the union at this point, and we're just waiting on a vote from the City Council.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none. All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Roll call.
On ratifying the contract, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook. Absent, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash. Yes, Counselor Twigs. Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, collective bargaining agreement is ratified. Item number 21, Mr. Clerk.
Items number 21 and 22 are connected. Item number 21 is an order to ratify the collective bargaining agreement with UPSI.
Good evening, counselors again. This bargain has about 172 employees. It covers multiple departments in city government, clerks, our housing code inspectors, our toll collectors, our dispatchers. The last contract also expired on June 30th, 2016. Negotiations began on March 3rd, 2016. We had approximately 11 bargaining sessions, including one mediation session. There's two contracts here, there's one that covers the period of July 1st, 2016 to June 30th of 2017, followed by a three-year contract covering the period of July 1, 2017 to June 30th, 2020. The wage increases again are 2%, 2%, 2%, 2%. We did an upgrade for some of the housing code inspectors. We also did an upgrade, a small upgrade, for a payroll accounts payable clerk and for one administrative assistant. We changed the detention attendance schedule at the police department to a Monday to Friday schedule. We changed the rule on what we, on how we handle essential personnel during serious storms. We put direct deposit and electronic payroll devices in this contract. We also added uniform and dress code language, and we put GPS in the code inspector cars, and those are the major highlights of this contract.
Any questions from the council? Counselor Williams.
How do we do with residency?
It's already in there, counselor. Everyone hired after 7/1114 is covered under the ordinance.
Previous bargaining unit?
The last time I did the contract, we got it in there.
And you said that you, you dealt with the emergency personnel during storms and...
Right, right.
Was 311 included in that?
What we did is the language, the way it's worded is it's at the discretion of the department head, so that if something happens, we have a terrible storm, and we close City Hall, what we can do now is we can say, well, we may need somebody who typically wouldn't have to come in, we can now say, you gotta come in, because we really need you on this day for this specific purpose. So, if we have to get payroll out on that morning, and it happens to be a Monday, you know, and we close because we've got a foot of snow out there, or 18 inches of snow, or two feet, you know, we may still say, listen, we still need this person to come in, because we have to get the payroll done, and we now have that authority to do that.
What about 311? TJ wants to say something.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, 311, they're in whenever we have a snow emergency, they're in, and they're in for the hours most of the storm, so they're in for the last two storms, they work from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, taking calls.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fenton.
Mr. President, I just want to thank Bill and his team for getting residency into these contracts previously and sticking to it. This body's made it a priority, and I appreciate Counselor Williams' question as well. I also just want to highlight, and related to residency, in another matter, Mr. Mahoney, Attorney Mahoney, was kind enough to comply with the council's new ordinance regarding waiver requests, and this body all received notification of a waiver request for a city physician through the Health Department. That position was reposted properly through the city's website pursuant to that ordinance that was drafted, and ultimately, I believe that we're in a position now to be issuing the waiver. But the point is that we have a system of checks and balances where there's notice and an opportunity for Springfield residents to come forward, and I wanted to thank Bill personally and on behalf of this body for doing that.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none. All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On ratifying the contract, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.